Show that a quorum of board members present, that this meeting's been duly called, and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. You will join me, and you'll say our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. First on the agenda will be the roll call. When I say each member's name, please let me know if you are here, and I'm assuming that if you're not here, you will not be saying anything. Okay? All right. First, Ms. Maria Cruz-Prez.
Here.
Mr. Esteban Serta.
Here.
Mr. Sean Glovier.
Here.
Ms. Debbie Viegomez.
Here.
Ms. Maria Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Felicia Moody.
Here.
And Darrell Owens is here, and we have a full board present tonight. Thank you very much. Next, moving to Section 3 would be public comments on the agenda. Are there any speakers signed up for items that are on the agenda? Okay. Right. And then we'll go to Section 4. Are there any speakers signed up for non-agenda items?
None.
Thank you very much, Mr. Serta. We'll then move to Section Number 5, and then we'll go to Special District Recognitions, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Gee.
So we have our Positively Awesome Long Cat Awards. We started at high school. We had quite a few at the high school. I think Mr. Kegel sent out something, and they got on it, so they had a lot. But we have Aaron Todd Lee, he has three. Allison Middleton, Barbara Arviva- Vizu, sorry. Candy Alsod has two. Carrie Shue, Chelsea Allison. Kristy Vick has two. Coach Wakeland has three. Coach Kidd, three. Coach Munson, four. Coach Barrett. Coach Sphinx, two. Danny Wilcox, two. DeeDee Grimes. Errol Oaktie. Dr. Jacques Robinson. Jessica Harris. Joy Lucero has two. Julie Notton, three. Kaylee Bond. Kathy Duncan. Kelly Wilson. Kristy Hullett. Kim Padgett. Kim Padgett. Kristen Dunn. Kylie Robinson. Linda Mordrono. Lindsay Hammond. Maestro Stevens has four. Matt Casey, two. Matt Skank. Melissa Springfield, two. Melissa Bearden. Michael Kegel, two. Nanette Tate. Paul Trantham. Rachel Brooks. Sarah Kruger has two. Shannon Johnson. Shelley Fajewski. Tracy Hadaway. Wayne Maddox. Wendy Hale has four. And Wendy Thacker. And that was high school. At Delaney, we have Amy Johnson. Christopher Allen. Donna Nguyen has two. Emily Path. Janet Farid, two. Kim Knotts. Manuel Medina. Marcy Harris. Mariella Troshi. And Marissa Sueyn. Alyssa Cook has three. Rebecca Henin, two. Shelley Wooden. Shanae Paul. Trisha Poore has two. And Yolanda Canalis. At Patterson Elementary, we have Alex Sneefert. Carrie Clark. Evelyn Ish. Lisa Horton. Michael Quann. Rachel Parker. And Rachel Rigsby. At the junior high, we have Althea Daniels. Angela Bruce. Casey Thompson. Irene Owens. Jonathan Johnson. Megan Lockwood. Rosalia Sandoval. And central office, Andrew Morrow, sorry. Dr. Stephanie Devlin. Katrina Ashford. Laura Adams. Mandy Ravelay. Monica Rawls. Robin Shaw. Tracy Gray. And Wendy Gersonstall, of course. Corn. There we go. All right. That was quite a few of them, so that was all of our Hall Awards for the month.
Great recognition. Yes. Ms. Douglas.
Before we move off of recognitions, I want to brag about one of our principals for a moment, if I could.
Go brag on.
All right. So I was scrolling through social media one night, and Mr. Kegel was blowing up social media. And the first story was a parent shared that he walked up to one of the tables in the cafeteria and asked the kiddos if they were going to go to the play, the musical. And they said, "Well, we'd love to. We don't have the money." He pulled out the money, gave it to the kids, said, "Go buy your ticket." Okay? That was the first story. From there, parents after parents after parent after parent chimed in and said, "Let me tell you this story about Mr. Kegel. Let me tell you this story about Mr. Kegel. Let me tell you what he did for my kiddos. My kiddos are graduated," and that he had really touched them in so many different ways. So, I mean, it just went, the thread just went on and on and on about Mr. Kegel that night. So I just wanted to make sure I said that publicly, that you were all over social media. Way to go, Mr. Kegel.
In a positive way. Very positive way. Yes.
Well, I say congratulations, Mr. Kegel, for being so popular on social media.
Positively. We have to stress.
Positively popular. Thank you.
Yeah, because some people, it's so easy for people to complain and show the negative, so I think it says that much more when it's all positive. So, great job.
Awesome. I would be remiss, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would be remiss if I did not say that I think that all of the principals that we have in Keno ISD are doing great jobs, and I am, I think that we're lucky to have each and every one of them.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. So I have one as well. So, last night, if you didn't get a chance to go to the veterans' event, it was very well put together. It was very nice. And I'm partial to the Kennedale High School band. However, the fact that the junior high has fifty-nine, I counted, fifty-nine, forty-nine or fifty, boys in their choir is a testament to the teachers, so very good to everybody, but especially the junior high. I thought that was amazing. Half of the stage was boys. Very good.
Great. That's unusual.
Yes, it is. So, very good.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other brags before I go on? All right. But again, they're all worthy of being bragged on.
Yeah.
So next, we will move to Section 6, which will be our Consent Agenda. So all items listed under this subheading will be adopted with one motion unless they are removed from the Consent Agenda by a trustee for discussion. If there is such a request, and since there's not, I will entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all items under the Consent Agenda as presented.
And that is Ms. Viegomez.
Second.
And we'll go to the second with Ms. Moody. All right. All in favor of said motion, let it be known by a sign "Aye."
Aye.
All opposed? And that carries unanimously. Awesome. Okay. So then we will now move to, we'll go to, is that the subtopic I played, is it good to Mr. Gee?
Seven A.
Oh, seven A. Okay. Go to the ballot scorecard dashboard, and there again, back over to Mr. Gee.
It should be the Gifted, Talented program.
Okay. The Gifted, Talented program?
Yeah. Let's do that.
That should be seven A.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time. I'm here to talk about a couple of things related to gifted and talented. First is the overview of the state plan, and second is our program evaluation from last year. I know you have a lot of information. You've had these in your hands prior to tonight, but I do want to go through and at least touch on some highlights, and then take questions. So this is our, this is the state's definition of a gifted and talented student, and probably seen it many times before, notice it doesn't talk about any particular way to quantify what a student is, other than relative to POs and specific potential for performing at a high level. This is the Texas State Plan, and this state plan is what drives everything that we do in our programming. And so it basically helps us to plan annually. It helps us to evaluate annually, and to, and to go to improve each piece of it. There are actually, if you've looked at the state plan, there are over eighty standards within it. And so one of those standards, 5.10, says the board needs to have an understanding of the state plan and how it drives our programming. That's why we're here. So the first plan came out in 1990, and the, this talked more about opportunities for students. What should we be doing to serve students that were defined in that definition as gifted? What kinds of thinking, what kind of experiences should school districts provide for them? The plan that we're using now was updated in the spring of 2019, so the 1920 school year, and basically the research had changed, so the language had changed a little bit, and so they updated it. And they also, in that state plan, they put some exemplary standards in there, so for districts that wanted to go above what the accountability was, they defined that a little bit better in some of the areas. There are exemplary standards, as you saw, not in all areas, but some of them were defined over with those .1 standards. They also gave some, a website with some resources for teachers, because a lot of the gifted and talented skills that we want to develop are project-based. They put materials out there that were aligned to the TEES, for the grade levels, and great ways to assess them. So they, they provided a recommendation, not required, but it's a recommendation that was already aligned to our state standards. And so the plan is in six sections. These are called aspects. And the first one is fidelity of services. So fidelity of services, as I said, that is our evaluation activities, so it's making sure that we're compliant in all areas of gifted and talented, and that we're going to use the standards in the plan to build our, our programming. Here's an example of something we do under fidelity of services. We make sure that all of our policies and procedures are in a handbook, published for our families, and also the public. Student assessment is the next aspect. This is about identification, referral, access, and equity. And also, these items are in our handbook. That's the best way to get them. They're on our website, and we have policies in place for that. And we have an ongoing referral process. We have co-get screening for second graders, and we have parental consent where it's required in that process. A really important part of the student assessment aspect that came with that new revised plan is related to equity, and in 1920, the 1920 school year, the district looked at that and determined a way to have our, at least screen students to ensure that our population, we gave students the chance for the population of gifted, to look as, be a reflection of the population of the district. And so that began, again, in the 1920 school, school year. We have a lot of data that's broken down by subpopulations, but this one will tell you where we are now. So that was 1920, 2021, 2122. So we currently stand here with a representation index for each of those subpopulations. And there's a key at the bottom. Point eight is a good equitable standard, and 1.0 is perfect. We don't expect it to be perfect. Our goal is not to have our GT student population match the percentages, but the real goal is to look deeply at the policies. So I don't know if you can see the colors very well there, but the point eight and higher I put in green, and then below I put in red. So as we go into our screening process this year, we'll really look more closely at those subpopulations. And it's not that we didn't screen more students or look at them. Sometimes they don't, they don't end up being qualified, but we want to really look at those three, and what is it that we're doing? Is there a better way to assess? Are we missing something? And just really be cognizant of, are we catching the students with giftedness in those populations? So that, that's just a snapshot of where we are now, after the three years. Service design is, what does it look like? What does it look like in the district? What's the system that we have from kindergarten up through grade twelve? What do we have in our core academic areas? Do we have the right credential leaders over the program? And also, as you've seen in the handbook, our elementary has students clustered in the classroom with trained teachers. They have a separate GT teacher that pulls students out to work in challenge lab. We upped our minutes this year again. After last year, we had to change them a little bit due to the, the academic needs. The teachers are also pushing into the classroom, and that's a big focus for us this year as well, on the activities, and what are they doing with those students in the push-in? And then they, those teachers also invite the students to a lunch bunch, optional, and then they send home a report card. So that's our elementary. And then secondary students are served through advanced courses. And so starting in sixth grade, they have honors, and they have some acceleration in the math. They're taking high school algebra, some of them, and then they go into CTE, and on-ramps, and all the, the college board AP in the high school. So curriculum instruction, this is where you really get into the depth of the house. So the service design is more the what and what that looks like. And then curriculum and instruction is, what are we doing in those classrooms? So the products, how do we pace the curriculum? How do we differentiate? Really kind of the meat of how we serve students and make sure that GT students do grow. And, and also, can we schedule a certain way? All the ways that we make sure that those students get what they need in the classroom. And this just talks about being in the four, again, based on the definition, that their work should be more project-based and performance activities at advanced levels, and that we have a district coordinator that oversees the program and, and all the improvement So the most important part of curriculum instruction is that we're always looking for improvement. And so as part of our CNA in the spring, of course, we looked at disaggregated data, and GT was one of the groups that we looked at. And so this is just an example. There are several references into the, in the DIP that hasn't been approved yet, but these are, this is just a strength and a problem statement that was uncovered in the CNA. And it's, it's data like this that we use in driving the program. So this one in particular, what we realized was that the percent of GT students that met their grade level performance in reading was, actually met 2019 levels, which was wonderful. Now, that was district-wide. Now campuses, in their campus improvement plan, they may drill down and see some differences in grade levels, but, but for a district, that was a great plus that we saw. And then in the math, it wasn't exactly that. But again, that's just an example of one bit of data that we've, we've used in the And then most importantly, as we do our continuous improvement efforts, it's the coordination between the campus and the district. So the district coordinator is, is monthly in collaboration with the campus coordinators, and this year, our focus is really to look at data. We are using MAP so much better than we did a couple of years ago, and so we're really bringing in the, the growth of these students and making sure that they have not hit a ceiling. And so these are the, the conversations that we really want to keep having with our GT coordinators, because then that will lead to what do we need to do to support teachers and programming in order to make sure that these students are served in, in as strong a manner as possible. And they plan for the showcase, and they, they talk about what PD needs are, and, and just problem solve, basically, as a team. And so that's, that's a very valued part of the curriculum instruction piece. Professional learning, this is probably pretty self-explanatory, but it's really important. Everybody needs to have their hours. Teachers need to have their thirty hours, and then there are different roles that need their six-hour updates. And this is just, just a very, very important piece if we want to continue increasing the capacity of everyone involved. And then there's training you.
I have a question back on that back slide. For...
This one?
Yes. For staff that doesn't do their training hours, what happens for that? I know they have till the end of December, right? December 31st? Because I noticed in your newsletter, that, because I had seen that the last few times, that there's still a lot that haven't done their hours for that, and if it's the end of next month, I was just curious what the plan was for that.
So in terms of tracking hours on individual campuses, none of us supervise the teachers. And so we're putting the information out to principals. We've spoken with principals. We're hoping with the upcoming week as a break that they'll get caught up on that. We provided them with several different options, but to answer your question succinctly, their schedules will be changed. It's really hard for kids to have their schedules changed in the middle of the year.
Yeah.
And so we, we spoke about it at our Wednesday meeting. We're really pushing the principals to help the teachers fulfill their obligation to get their hours.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. So if you change the schedules for, and I don't know how many children we're talking about, so will that put a teacher out of compliance with the twenty-two to one? If you have to change schedules, is it that enough children to...
We won't do that. We are very, we have the greatest confidence in our principals and in our teachers that we're going to get there. We will not go over twenty-two to one. We'll make it work. We, but because we have so much confidence in our principals that they're going to help make this happen, we haven't actually sat down and mapped out the numbers.
And just to follow up on what Dr. Vu said, with those reminders, we have done some follow-up to make sure that everybody's documented in the system and registered, and it, it looks very good. So the, the teachers, like she said, the principals have been working with the teachers. Our coordinator has been working with Region 11 and opening up other courses, and we've been in communication with the campuses. So, yeah, there were a lot of reminders. And generally, we, the district's very strong as far as the communication when it comes to professional learning. This is just an example. There's so many ways that these availability of trainings and tracking and all of that, leadership meetings with principals, and then we have newsletters. We have a great PD site. So, very strong in that area. Delayed. There we go. Okay. And, and this just kind of talks about the same thing. We have face-to-face. We have online. We have a tracking system. And we do encourage teachers as well, if there's something that they are really interested in, and it does align to the GT standards, there's an approval process. So if they do an external training, we can approve it for GT if it aligns to the standards, and they've shown us that. Family and community involvement, the last aspect, super important. This is getting input. This is having committees, program evaluation, and there's so, so much that can be done to share with the community, what students are doing, but also to get them to be involved in the program and part of the input process to, to improve it. And here are some ways. We have a public website. We have an, a monthly family newsletter, and there is a showcase. The PAC, we, I think this has been mentioned before, that our community and parent teams are called PACs this year, so that's a GT. It meets under the facilitation of our district GT coordinator. We have two specific meetings scheduled, but they also can meet as needed for anything that comes up. And so we had our fall meeting, and we have a spring meeting coming up in March. Okay. So the, this plan, as I said, drives our programming, and then the program evaluation, hopefully you can see the connection, is basically just the coordinator and this group of, of parents and teachers and administrators coming together and really going through the standards and seeing the alignment. And so that's what they did. Over time, it started in the spring, summer, and we even had some in the fall. And I gave you some notes. Those were just some notes that were taken, but also you have the report, and the report talks about the strengths and the recommendations for improvement. And so that would be this one. And of course, there's so many things you want to do, but we had to prioritize them because most of these you want to do in the coming year. So the, the recommendations for improvement, well, we'll start with the, the strengths. We're very strong on making sure that we have the policies in place and published, that our people are trained, that the committees are functioning, and really that we're looking at students for, from several aspects. So we don't want a student to exit. So the, the committees and the teachers are really good. Last year, when we dealt with a lot of students that we're dealing with HB 4545, we had to furlough some, and they really did everything to progress monitor those students and to make sure that they didn't exit unless it was absolutely necessary. So that's the strength of, of, one of the strengths that's in those exemplary areas. And then the program improvement, we can always, always get better, but we focused on mostly PD and, PD and curriculum and instruction, because those were really the ones that we felt would have the best impact on students. So PD is so important. You can have PD. You can be in compliance, but the effectiveness of it has so many levels that it can go, and we really want to personalize it. We want to make sure teachers have what they need so that students have what they need. And so, and we want to keep monitoring curriculum and make sure, like I said, that the students are growing, and that we can see that in the data, and that we are collaborating on the resources that we have, and making sure that those students are getting the differentiation that they can. That's a huge task, but I, I don't know a school district that could ever say that they have reached their ceiling in PD or curriculum instruction, because we should always be trying to improve that. And so we, we really narrowed it down. Most of them were in those areas. And I won't read it to you, because as I said, you've seen it, so. And those are the two I, so do you have any questions?
I'm a big fan of our duty program, so I'm part of it.
It's a very exciting...
Especially with the baby chicks that just came out this year.
Very exciting.
Only one thing, you mentioned a handout.
Yes.
I don't have that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there were also handouts.
Okay.
Well, I do. It's, I have a question about you.
I thought that...
So my question is, well, I have a couple. First, professional development mostly is after the students, the professional development is for the teachers who have the GT certification, or their hours, or whatever. So then what's the professional development for the teachers to better identify students who typically would not be seen as someone who's GT?
That would be in the beginning of the year, when the overview of the program is done on the campus. And that comes from the campus GT coordinator.
Oh, is it, is it done?
Well, the overview is done at the beginning of the year, but as I said, there's, there's collaboration, so there's reminders that go out. We have a referral process that spans all year. So we do screen in the middle of the year after MOI MAP, but our referral process is open all the time. So, so, did I answer your question?
I said, do you...
Yes. So they're told in the beginning of the year what the process is, but they can refer all year.
And then as far as the data goes, the three targeted populations are African-American, economically disadvantaged, and ED bilingual. So, or emergent bilingual, excuse me. So the African-American actually is going up. The ED went down, and there's not information for the EBS, but that's because probably they just renamed them. But when you're looking at the data from 2020 to 2022, it's broken down by subgroups, and then it goes down at the bottom by the, I'm on slide 99. It goes down into the different categories. I'm pretty sure this is going on, but when you're looking at the, those three different populations, is it addressed where most of those referrals are coming from elementary? And then by the time, let's say, I'm economically disadvantaged, I'm in the program, GT identified in elementary, and then I get to middle school, and I don't want to take the honors classes anymore, so I'm off? Is that where the, or have we looked that deep?
You're asking if, so this...
If they start off high and then trickle off?
Because they choose to not participate in the programming. I don't know the answer to that, but I absolutely can get you those trends. So you're saying that maybe the students did not continue... So you're saying that maybe the students did not continue to participate as they went to like junior high?
I'm hoping that they were referred in elementary school, but then got to middle school, and then they got to high school and said, I don't want any part of honors classes. As opposed to, my teacher did not notice that I'm, even though I'm misbehaving and tearing up the classroom, I'm actually pretty smart and gifted, I just don't channel my energy in the right direction.
Okay, so the identification at the elementary. I can get you more data on that as we're meeting, actually, we have one meeting tomorrow with up through 8th grade, so.
Yes.
There is data.
There is data. It's something that we looked at very closely in 2020, 2021, spring 2020 and into the fall of 2021. Just a note about our ECHO DIS. Our number of economically, or students who are fall under the economically disadvantaged umbrella is going up. So there are more students, so in terms of students who are identified for the gifted program, it's not that that number is necessarily going down, but when our number goes up, the percentage is fewer. So that's one piece. The second piece is what you said is absolutely correct. When students get to middle school, when they get to high school, and they're not interested in being in an honors class, for whatever reason, then that's where Ms. Volding was talking about. Sometimes they're furloughed. We do have the counselors encouraging them. Because giftedness, a lot of times, there's giftedness in math, but maybe not in other subjects. And that doesn't mean that they need to be removed from all of the honors classes, but to really target the areas where they are strong and develop those particular skills. The point, the goal of the gifted and talented program is to help students reach their full potential. And so we really do want to provide as many support and resources as we can to make that happen. Elementary students generally are more enthusiastic about the programs aligned, or you know, that are part of the gifted and talented program. That's not always the case in secondary for a variety of reasons.
Depending on how they get to middle school, they start having more like, they start having sports, they start getting other interests that are still in some of those things that drive that.
And I'll talk about my personal experience as a secondary teacher. You have students who are, they're brilliant, they have so many, they're giftedness in multiple areas, but they care about bands more than anything else. And they want to do, you know, every, all the band contests, and they want to do practices and all the things. And they're, they're just not, they make this choice to remove themselves from those classes just because of the level of work, the homework outside of class.
Any other questions? Awesome. Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to 7B, the tax hole summary.
The report that's in your packet is the culmination of a year's worth of appraisals by the appraisal district. You set a tax rate in August, and that's what this report is reflecting. That it was good that day, the next day it was probably a different answer. Not significant, but protests are filed, some protests are dismissed, or came to an agreement with the appraisal district on evaluations. Lawsuits are filed over the values. Home state exemptions are claimed late. But this is how much taxes we're going to generate with the appraised value and the tax rate that you set. Is there any questions?
Looks like there are no questions. Okay, let's then move to section 8, business items requiring action. AA, discuss and consider accepting funds from the Kennebelle Educational Foundation for fall 2022 grant awards. Yeah, Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Burr from the Education Foundation, they will be presenting to you.
So we're here representing the Kennebelle Education Foundation, and we wish to provide grants to the teachers and staff in the district in the amount of $31,793.53.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was a great year, and 90% of our applicants were first-time applicants, so it was really exciting. And we updated, it went to a Google form this year, which we're hoping made it a lot easier for the teachers to apply. So we're pretty excited and hoping you'll allow us to grant this to the district.
Awesome. Well, great. I think that is great, that's awesome. So I'm sure there's not going to be a problem with that, but.
I'm going to have to make a motion to accept the donation of funds from the Kennebelle Education Foundation as presented.
That's Ms. Cruz Perez, and seconded by, I think we're gonna go into Ms. Serna. Okay, all in favor of accepting the funds from Kennebelle Education Foundation, let it be known by a sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Make sure it notes that everyone, that was unanimous, however, temporarily missing was Ms. Beagle, ma'am. Ladies, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you will next move to section 8B, that is where we discuss and consider approval of the 2022, 2023 district and campus improvement plans.
This was presented at the last board meeting, and questions there, so this is basically just where we accept them.
Did Dr. Vu have a question?
I think she was going to speak. And if you had questions?
We didn't coordinate beforehand. The campus improvement plans were presented by the principals last week, last month, and I presented the district improvement plan. And per BQ legal, we are requesting the approval of the performance objectives as discussed last night.
Will you give us that, what'd you just said, PQ?
B, as in boy, BQ legal.
I went to look it up, and I didn't find it. Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Okay, then I will accept the motion at this time.
I move to approve the 2022, 2023 district improvement plan and campus improvement plans as presented.
Second.
And that's presented by Mr. Glovier and Ms. Douglas with second. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by a sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And none opposed, that passes unanimously, and if you will mark, just as we did the last one, that temporarily missing was Ms. Beagle, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to 8C, that's discuss and consider approval of local district update to the COA, local.
And this is simply just a policy, fixing something in policy that was just stated in our policy. We had our child nutrition director basically overseeing and using the federal child nutrition funds, but it's actually the CFO, Chief Financial Officer. So when we had a survey, they sent out a survey, we answered the questions, and they sent back that we need to change the policy, so, but it's in that jar. There's where we're getting in line that you're basically.
Who's they?
I'm sorry?
The they, the they that said we were wrong.
Tazby.
Okay.
They sent out a survey, and then they come back and said it's not matching up.
So that just came down from Tazby? Do you have any questions, additional questions regarding it? All right, that being the case, I will accept the motion to accept the revision policy presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the revision to policy COA local as presented.
Second.
Proposed by Ms. Cruz Perez, and then seconded by Ms. Glovier. All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And Ms. Secretary, please note the closing. Thank you very much. We'll now go to 8D, which is to discuss and consider approval of contractor for the remodel of the James A. Arthur Early Childhood Center.
Here we go.
Hey, friendly face.
Yes, good evening. Excited to share with you an update on the remodel of James A. Arthur for the Early Childhood Center. A week ago, we received bids for that project. We received two bids from two contractors. As you remember, we were, this was a competitive sealed proposal approach. So two contractors submitted, Mart came in with a number of $5,140,000, and ABG came in with a bid of $4,858,922. My last estimate right before we went to bid was 5.1 million. So Mart would have put us just a tad over budget, but ABG puts us under budget, so that was, that was good news. So part A was their number that they submitted, part B is the qualifications that come along with that. A group comprising of Robert, Eileen, Tracy, Mr. Adams, and Stephanie evaluated those qualifications. Those were the construction contract amount, the construction contract time, the schedule, the project personnel, subcontractors, project experience, the financial background for the contractors, claims and suits, the quality control program. After their evaluation and scoring each one of those categories on a scale of 0 to 10, ABG scored as the highest in that evaluation. And so it would be my recommendation that we move forward with ABG as the contractor for the remodel of James A. Arthur for the Early Childhood Center.
Will they be able to get started?
So we're still working through the permit process. We should be getting our first round of comments if there are any, any day. We followed up this week and haven't heard any comments back. So as soon as we can get through that process, we'll get started.
We gotta get the contract.
Get the contract worked out with ABG. I know we're not involved in the contract work that's happening right now for the repairs, but that's, I think, ongoing as well. But there's plenty of work elsewhere in the building that can be done once we get our permit and get the contract with ABG worked through and can start.
All the bells and whistles that we asked for, everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Is with the $4.8 million.
Yes, ma'am. Everything that we presented in our previous presentations, all of that is included in our, in that 4.8.
Can you give me those numbers again?
Sure. Mart was $5,140,000, and ABG was $4,858,922.
That also has contingency built into it.
We have $125,000 in contingency. The district, so as a, as a whole, there's additional $500,000 that's outside of the contract that will be with ABG that the district has to purchase new furniture, fixtures, or equipment for the project. Within ABG's number, they, there are two allowances for the playground equipment on the exterior of the building and then inside the multipurpose or the indoor interactive area. So that's a number that they carry. It just allows the district to be selective about what that playground equipment actually looks like, as opposed to leaving it up to the contractor. So we've had some coordination, I've had some coordination, presented some of those options to Mr. G and others for consideration. And so the final selection will be occurring as we move forward.
All right, other questions? Sounding good, it seems like it's reality now.
We are, we are finally there, and so it's, it's exciting. I'm ready to get rolling on it and see the, see the transformation. This is, this is the exciting time.
The concrete work started on Monday, and brickwork, they had already started to get all the brickwork, so we're already rolling with those projects. And now we get this all night now. If you approve this tonight, we'll get rolling with all the other stuff that we were just talking about, permitting and contracts, and we'll be starting soon.
Yep.
Still feeling we'll be able to hit the date, start date?
So I believe their substantial completion date was July 7th. They were both right around that date, both contractors. That's, that was our estimated completion date as well, so they were both within that range of completion in July. So they will allow you enough time to move into the building before the start of the next school year. So, all good things.
Sounds good. You like good news?
Yes, sir. It was a, it was a good day.
Well, love to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Arthur Building Group as a chosen contractor for the remodel of James A. Arthur Early Childhood Center as presented.
Second.
Presented by Ms. Douglas, and seconded by Mr. Glovier. All in favor?
Aye.
Known by aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously with, Ms. Beagle being temporarily unavailable. Thank you very much. All right, awesome. And personnel?
Can we move that to the end?
Yeah. Okay. Are there any objections to moving that personnel, that's just to the end? All right, we will do that. All right, so then we go to the superintendent's report.
So you have your snore, uh, smores. The walkout wire from the curriculum service department, the Rainy Elementary and Patterson. Those are in there for your viewing. We have the attendance and enrollment update. You have that sheet in front of you. Basically, we were, Miss Randle and I had this conversation yesterday. We are holding pretty, pretty steady at our 2850 numbers, you know, right around that range. So that's where we're, we're sitting. We did have some differences in our transfer, open transfers at the high school. We had one that, you know, came and picked up paperwork and everything, but they never showed up to start. And then one committed back to Martin High School. And that's a little change there. But other than that, we're, we're holding pretty, pretty steady. And then attendance. Still not where we were pre-pandemic, but we're, we're getting back, we're getting closer to it. 94, pretty consistently, 94, 95, in that range. But I guess we've still got some work to do, and we're, our principal is working on, the, the writers and all that to go on. So that's where we are there. I will say we have our future communities meetings coming up. Future community meetings dealing with our facilities assessments and kind of needs assessments where we're moving there. I'm going to request that you each send me three names, three to five names of people in the community that you'd like to see on these meetings, so you can just email those to me. I would appreciate it. And we'll sort of contact them. We hope to have one of the first meetings set up following.
What was the committee?
It's going to be the facilities assessments, very basically working, looking at our facilities and planning for the future. As I say, it's probably saying future, I mean.
As far as our attendance, I know you said letters are going out and things like that. Do we ever, have we ever done any incentives for perfect attend, other than just maybe a certificate or something, you know, bike award or something to get those attendance? Are there other incentives built in as well for increasing the attendance, other than just letters being sent out? Have we ever done anything like that to try to get them back down?
Our principal was shaking her head yes, so you don't want to come speak to that because what did you offer at the campuses?
Yeah, perfect attendance at a great school, like?
For the little people, we are, I'm Rob Marlowe.
I'm Wildo. For the little people, we are, the principals got together along with the PMS clerks and the attendance clerks on the November day that we had off for election, and came up with an incentive plan. So there will be a monthly incentive for the student to have perfect attendance. And I was at Delaney this morning, and it was announced on, Mrs. Poor announced it this morning on the announcements, and they're hyping it up big time. It will eventually go to like an attendance party, so they will be able to attend that. I think the first time, it's going to be like things that make them happy. I can wear athletic pants. So the first one would be something like that, and so they're going to build up to being able to have an attendance party for perfect attendance, and it is a monthly incentive. So that starts this month. And it's a joint thing, so they will do the same thing on both elementary campuses for perfect attendance. If one gets joggers, they both get joggers. All right, thanks.
What about junior high or high school level?
Junior high, Ms. Cruz.
Dynamite comes in small packages. So in 2019, before the pandemic, we were doing incentives and we'll.
And what we noticed with our junior high students is that if we were all offering these global incentives, it really wasn't targeting the needs of our kids who were having attendance problems. Since then, especially with the bringing in of the CIS coordinator, what we found is letting the CIS coordinator and our attendance principal, assistant principal, work with them and try to set many goals for those students to try to, so that it's more timely for them versus like overarching goals, because that doesn't really incentivize those children as frequently. And so targeting the children who are having attendance issues and trying to get them little goals that then increase to bigger goals, we found that to be a bit more effective for our junior high students at this time.
Thank you.
Kegel. Don't say sweats pass.
Oh, my goodness, no.
Am I work?
No.
I was gonna say that dinner with the superintendent was the reward. But.
You should have said dinner on the superintendent.
One of the things, we developed, you guys approved campus improvement plans today. It is, we added the attendance initiative in the, that is a work in progress right now. That's an area, I'd say for a few years, we have not really had this. As principal of the junior high here in the high school pre-COVID, this was not an area where we had, we struggled. In fact, been at a lot of campuses where we earned academic distinctions because our attendance rate was so high and we were in the top 25% of most of our comparison group of 40 schools. And so post-COVID, we know last year we did our campus needs assessment. We took a pretty big slide. We have recovered a little bit this year. We tried again. Like I said, last board meeting, starting school later, doing some things. Right now, I, I got a phone call today from Lisa Walsh before this board meeting because I wanted to check on our attendance, and she gave me the update. We've actually slid a little bit from where we were last month's meeting. So we are working pretty aggressively. We've got a lot of new challenges. In our phone call with Ms. Walsh today, I also learned that we have just now become probably the first time in our high school's history where we have over 50% of our students now are economically disadvantaged or qualify for the National School Lunch Program. And so there are some things, it is a different time right now, and we're adjusting to that. I know in central office, Mr. Reins is working in central office, and he is coordinating right now with our APs to not only aggressively try to provide interventions and support to the students that we have, but right now, Dr. Douglas, your question, I'm gonna have to, remember, you gave me some praise at the beginning of the meeting, so I get to stand here now in front of the microphone and say, no, we don't have a good attendance program. I've been a teacher on a campus that at one time gave away a car. They gave away raffle tickets, and at the end of the year, they raffled a car off. That was about 2004 or '05, I believe. But I have not, we have not, we do give awards, perfect attendance awards, so there are those incentives just to be recognized at our Wildcat ceremony. But no, I don't have a good attendance program right now. It's in our campus improvement plan, and it's something we've, we talked about with, Mr. Reins has been in central office now coordinating with our APs, so.
I will say exemptions, you know, that's always been kind of the go-to for at the high school level, exemptions on finals or being able to come in late on finals, those kind of things for.
Again, I should have left 30 minutes ago. My night would be going better right now. We, we are going back to all kids taking semester exams in the, in the fall, which is another popular decision right now. But right now, that is, that is an area that we need. We are at 94 and a half roughly, I think, percent. I forgot the exact decimal numbers there, but we need to be, we need to be at 96, 97%, somewhere in that range, I think, historically, to be competitive for academic distinctions and those kind of things. So we know that's still a recovery area. It's higher than last year, but it's not where we were pre-COVID.
So we're talking about the children, but at the end of the day, it's the parents who get your kid to school or not, right? Or make sure your kid goes out that door or not. Are we doing anything to talk to these parents to say, hey, this is important?
We do. We have a process. They're state law. We do a lot of things.
Yeah, but that letter just kind of gets.
We get letters, but we also, our, our assistant principals, mostly at most campuses, I'm speaking for my campus right now, but our assistant principals do do a lot. They take some intermediate measures. They do meet with the students. We have attendance makeup opportunities, which are required by law. But we reach a point, and when they reach so many absences, we actually have to, by law, develop a attendance intervention plan. And so we actually, in that, in the, in those processes, we look at, we try to identify, what are the reasons that a student's missing? Okay, why, why are they absent or why are they truing? We try to identify ways that the school support. We, we, we do have some, you know, cases. You know, we have a lot of cases where first periods are most popular period to miss. That one and the one after lunch. But the first period's popular to miss, and, and one of the things we realized quickly, I, I spoke with a parent today on the phone. They leave for work. And it is really up to the kid. A lot of, I'd say a probably good, I don't have a number. So I'd say it's pretty common probably for our high school students to be on their own, to have to wake up and get to go to school. And so probably with two working parents or, you know, or when our single parent households, they work, you know, it's pretty common. We also, I've noticed we got a lot of parents who work different shifts. So we got parents coming home and going to bed by the time the kids get up. So we try to identify various, a lot of various ways. We, we've got the Mr. Kegel and Ms. Tate knock on the door program also if we need to. We, we've done some of that. Our, our school security guards, who I think deserve a lot of credit a lot of times for the things that they do right now to keep our kids safe, but also they, we got a suburban up there, and every once in a while, they'll go get a kid and bring them to school if they have to, especially in the cold weather. So, yeah, we try, we, we do have, we sit down and we talk with parents. So we've got to have student meetings. We, we send out the, you know, the letters, the document, the required letters, and those are required. But the APs do do a good job of trying to establish, try to find out the reasons why, try to come up with a plan of action. We, they'll do some contracts sometimes and try to make sure, you know, we were making sure some kids this, this afternoon stayed and made up some hours. So the big part is if, also if they have attendance problems, we want to make sure they don't lose credit, course credit, and we've got those credit, those attendance makeup programs. So anyway, yes, I'm running long. We'll be here all night, but.
The thing, in addition to that, one of the things I'm gonna brag on you for is, like I said in your office last week and last Friday, and watch Mr. Kegel make positive phone calls home, you know, and they call them positive referrals. So teachers initiate this through a Google form, and they send it out, and basically they brag on kids for doing good things in the classroom as opposed to getting sent to the office for negative things. So some of that is attendance, you know? The kids are actually showing up. So there are some other things, but you know, sitting there watching, you know, Mr. Kegel call parents and the kid, bring the kid in, and the kid's sitting there, and the parent, you know, a lot of times they're shocked that they're getting the phone call. But another thing.
Sometimes I'm shocked.
During those conversations and sitting there, you know, I think one of the students that was called down, I mean, last year, Mr. Kegel sent me to go across the street and get him and bring him to school, you know, because he just wouldn't get up. Or maybe that was earlier on in school year, you know? So I think they're doing, they're trying a lot of things. It's just, it's, it continues.
We got, I feel like we got great kids in Kendal. You guys love her, great teachers, a lot of good things happening. I know, Sean, you work in Arlington, and you come over, I tell him, come on over and see your alma mater. Sometimes you'd be proud walking in, especially this year. Our programs are rocking and rolling, and we're doing some cool things. And, you know, we're starting to grow again, or, you know, get, get back in that regular flow. But, yeah, attendance is not, not where we needed. I, I don't know if this is a result of COVID, but.
I have a quick question, because you've said it a couple of times, that we're not pre-COVID. What was that number?
Well, again, I'd say at the high school, we had ranged really in, like I said, the comfortable range for me is 96 to 97%. The reason I say that number is comfortable to me is just my experience at the junior highest principal. And at the high school, if you want to be in the top quarter of schools in your comparison group to get that marking for those academic distinctions, that's why I say. Now, could we be 98%? I mean, I think every half, half percent at the high school is probably, what, about half a million dollars in funding on a $34 million budget if we have a third of the students, district students? I think maybe that's how that would go. Jimmy would have to figure that one out. But I think that's about what it would come to just by my calculations in my head when I was thinking about, we slid a little last month, and let's not go there. But it's pretty serious.
I'd like to thank Mr. Kegel for those wonderful words and Ms. Douglas for a wonderful question.
I've actually got one more.
There is another one?
Just looking at this data here. So this is classified by grades nine through 12. Is that truly grades nine through 12? Or is that cohort 23 through 20?
That is, that's a great question, and this is part of the thing that we looked at campus needs assessment wise. And our big struggle right now is also retention rates and some things. After two years of COVID, some students that just have gotten left behind. So when you look at grade nine, that's not cohort. So these could be 17-year-old freshmen, 16-year-old freshmen, you know, whatever it might be. But, yeah, that, that, we see a correlation. I, I sat down with teachers who had failure rates of over 15%. Our, our district leaders required all principals to sit down with every teacher that had a failure rate over 15%. I actually had a teacher break down her data for all the students that failed her courses, and I believe the number was 63% of the students in her classes. 63% of her students in her classes were, also had chronic attendance problems. And so there is a strong correlation between the same students that are not attending to, also the ones right now that are struggling academically, so.
I think I allude back to what Ms. Bruce was saying. This is where bringing in the CIS workers and our caseworkers can help with some of these solutions, makes a big contribution. And that's why we, whoever, Dr. Devlin, I'm gonna go back to our first conversation, we were doing bringing in communities in school with the caseworker. She said, we needed it at the high school. And I said, the high school? I would think we needed it at the elementary school. She said, no, Mr. G, we needed it at the high school. And that's where we put the first one. Then we brought one into junior high school. This year, we brought them into the elementary schools. So, you know, we've been funneling it down, but there's a definite need. I think the first year, there were like 250 students that the caseworker was seeing that very first year. And a lot of those issues were failures and attendance.
2000, Dr. Vif has got this stat right here. 1819 attendance rate, 96.16 at the high school. We know that during the COVID years, they had kind of a modified calculation, so it looked inflated of probably what it was. And I think it was like 97, 98%. But pre-COVID year, solid year was 96.16 in 1819.
Now, I'm going to, you know, reiterate, we're not in this boat alone. This is statewide with attendance and enrollments. Enrollments are still down across the state, and attendance rates are still not where they were.
Mr. G, do we have any Essar funds that we can do for the, not individual, or you can give it to them, but that's, but Essar funds that we could do, that the district could provide to the campuses for attendance incentives that are big ticket items, maybe not a car, but. Yeah, bikes or lanes, I don't know about lanes. Some people do, and I know there's stipulation, like you can't buy something, you can't buy something they can wear, you can't buy this, and you can't buy that with that money. But if we have Essar funds that they could use. All of them? Okay.
They are, but we can look at it because it's about prioritizing. You can't buy everything, but you can buy.
Yeah, we can't get a car.
One thing that I can definitely look at and get community partnerships to sponsor some prizes and goals to set in with that. So that's, ECU does an incentive program for our employees for perfect attendance. We can definitely.
That's something that could be done. That's a great idea.
Yeah, it is a great idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
And now, I think we need to go into closed session.
Yes. So it is, we have items that we need to discuss in closed session. So let me get back to. How do I do that? Okay, personnel operation. So with the 501, we need to do that in?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we are now going to go into matter of personnel, and then we'll do that under section 501, I believe. I'll pick that up if we need to. 551.071. And 551.074. Entering closed session.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Enter open session at 8:05 PM. Are we good? All right. Okay, and Mr. G.
Also on the superintendent's report, I forgot to tell you, so I'll jump back up to superintendent's report. We just sent out our operational newsletter today, and Ms. King in her section put in a thank you notice and basically on behalf of the board and the school district, and we, sorry, we are putting, sending out on this payroll the $500 incentive.
A lot. Yes, all right.
Very good.
That's this month, okay? So that was put out to employees today, this afternoon.
All right. Okay. Up next is board discussion for upcoming board meetings and dates. So we will be doing a, a board governance training on December.
November.
November 21st at 9:30 AM. Okay.
At CSS.
At the CSS. And our next scheduled board meeting will be December 15th at 6 o'clock PM here in this very building. Any questions about anything? Anyone?
No.
All right, since we've covered all items on our agenda, I now would entertain a motion to dismiss.
I move to adjourn this meeting immediately.
And.
I'll second.
First and seconded. Okay.
You never let anybody else.
Thank you very much, everyone.